Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Dudley Charlton Regional School Committee. It's Wednesday, January tenth. It is seven PM and we're at Shepherd Hill Regional High School. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll pause for a moment of silence. Great. Thank you, everyone. Our first order of business is the consent agenda items. Does anyone have a reason to move the minutes from the regular meeting of December thirteenth out of the consent agenda? No? Okay, so there is also the approval of the warrant vouchers ten forty to ten forty-four going around as well. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Jamie first and, okay, and Nicole second. Great. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Great. We'll move on to communications. Does any of our members have communications? Or Superintendent LaMarche, do you have a communication? Yep, go ahead.
On behalf of the Dudley Charlton Education Foundation, their second annual Heroes Among Us event is coming up. The date is April sixth, twenty twenty-four, and it's going to be held at the South Bridge Hotel and Conference Center, the same location that was held last year. And they're excited because they did vote on their ten heroes and they're in the process of letting those people know who they are and be very excited to find out who it is. And they were, they did ask if they could come and present that to us at some point. So I will reach back out to Sabrina about the January twenty-fourth meeting, see if that can be added then. And then also just a reminder, this Friday they have a musical bingo event as well at the Beagle Club in Charlton. I believe that tickets can still be purchased at the door and doors open at six and bingo starts at seven.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair and School Committee, I did receive a notification from the Town of Charlton that they have filed a public notice that there will be a surveyor who will be looking at two Oxford Road for a substation. They do, they need to work on wetland delineation. So the surveyors will be there. I don't have a date when they'll be onsite, but I did ask the Town of Charlton to let me know when they are so I can inform the schools when there'll be surveyors in that, in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to share that information as well.
Yes, Jamie? Okay, and then the Dudley Charlton Special Education Parents Advisory Council. The January meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January seventeenth at the Charlton Middle School. The board meets at six thirty. The meeting begins at seven. And we get to have Heather Harriman, Grace was with her presence, for how to write a measurable goal for the IEP.
Thank you for doing that.
Anyone else? No? Okay, we'll move on to the Student Representative Report. Ms. Sophia?
Not much has happened, I mean, since coming back from vacation because everyone's kind of just been getting back into the swing of things. But one of the most memorable things that have happened recently, this past weekend, the Drama Club at Shepherd Hill just recently held their production of Tim for Mare. And it's an original play written by one of our own students, Harry Kennon. He's a senior. And they had, they had two shows and I went to the one on Friday and it was really good. Did any of you guys go? I saw you there. The next thing I have is that the Boys Basketball just had their most recent game last night. I think it was against Swatch Uset. Alright. And I think they won that one as well. And they've been having a really good winning streak so far, so hopefully all things can go to plan later in the season. Some upcoming events I have written down are that midterms at the high school start tomorrow. We only have like one set of midterms tomorrow because of the professional development and Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday. But I just, I know they're coming up because I am very much like preparing for them. With that being said, I, I might have to leave at like seven thirty, eight, if that's okay. Thank you. And then the most, the one that we've been planning, at least for the music department, is that our home show, our Central Mastro Choir Festival is planned for Saturday, February third, I believe. Tickets should go on sale soon. There's going to be a bunch of new groups competing, some groups returning after a couple of years of not coming to our festival, but it should be very exciting and we hope that people will come and support the music department. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will move over to the Superintendent's Report.
Madam Chair and School Committee, my report is a little bit different this evening. What it is, is it's a memo that was provided when we met earlier this week with the, we had a joint meeting with the town administrators from Dudley and Charlton, as well as representative from school committee here, Ms. Kelly Zeller, a representative from the Select Board in Charlton, Mr. Steve Coronas, and the Finance Director for the Town of Charlton, Ashley, I don't know Ashley's last name.
Ingram.
Ingram? Ashley Ingram. And Mr. Matthew was there as well. So this memo was provided to the town. It really looks at fiscal year twenty twenty-five planning. I know that they were looking for numbers in, in December. We did provide them with a baseline number, but I'd like to go over this memo a little bit more with the school committee and I'd be, I'm sure it will, it may provoke some questions, which I'd be happy to try to answer this evening. So I'll actually read it into the record. Honorable Town Administrators and Representative Select Board Members, while fiscal year twenty twenty-five does not reflect the extraordinary compounding increases in fixed costs faced by the school district and local communities last year, the increased cost of doing business in the public sector for fiscal year twenty twenty-five will not reflect a return to the practice of minimal increases to assessments. As a district, the fixed costs are year to year. Dudley Charlton Regional School District has reduced staff over the years in an effort to meet the demand of increased fixed costs while maintaining the student experience as expected by the two communities. This continues to be a flawed practice for sustaining a continuum of continuous improvement, especially post-pandemic. So I list on the cover there what we've reduced since FY twenty-one, nineteen point seven positions. I've generalized the teaching positions, but you have some very specific positions in there that have been reduced at a total value of one point five million dollars in positions. Furthermore, the Dudley Charlton Regional School District Administration will continue to meet community expectations while maintaining the best experience possible for the children of Charlton and Dudley. The administrative team understands without an available grant, the only fiscally prudent model available to maintain a path of continuous improvement relies heavily on a reduction of equal value to pursue what is next, innovative and needed for our students, meaning that we don't have extra money in our budget to, to meet those needs. Additionally, the tried and true model of attrition to help balance the budget will have to continue. Unfortunately, we do not have a, we had a meeting today, we do not have a lot of retirees, so attrition is not going to be on the table and available to us to try to balance our budget as we determined today. So on the backside of this memo is the why, why there needs to be continued support for us in fiscal year twenty-five. On the left-hand side of the blue chart, you have what we, what, what we were looking for to get into the, in the need for the override, operational override in the community of Dudley last year. Our fixed costs were a perfect storm of a number of, a number of items. To remind you, we were going out for a new bid for transportation. We were going out for new bids for utilities. We had a fourteen percent increase in out-of-district tuitions set by the Office Operational Services Division of the State of Massachusetts. We had a number of items, perfect storm, to increase our budget to bring us to three point six million dollars in the need for the operational override for the Town of Dudley. On the right-hand side is what our fixed costs are at right now. Our contractual obligations are still and they will be year over year. Please continue to plan on this as a district around one point three million dollars. That's just our contractual obligations for our staff. Employee benefits and insurance, this is a much larger number. We are seeing trends and we are concerned. This is not a fixed number yet because we don't have the exact number for our health insurance, but health insurance costs are going skyrocketing. I met with somebody today who said her district is increasing by twenty percent. So this seven hundred fifty thousand dollars represents a double-digit increase for us. We hope we can bring that down, but we're not a hundred percent sure yet. Our utilities, because we entered into those contracts and this was presented by Mr. Matthew last year to the communities, our increases are negligible, meaning that they're managed within our current line items for utilities. Transportation, because we do have the new multi-year contract. Last year was the first year, which was the big hit, and the awarding of the contract and as we predicted and we shared. Next year's increase is, is still a large number, one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, but it's not the five hundred and fifty we realized getting into this fiscal year. Esser or transition, remember we have Esser monies that we are going away this year. We have a number of positions that are in that Esser. This does not reflect the entire amount of positions in the Esser, which represents close to seven hundred thousand dollars, but we do have some key positions right now that we need to continue in our district to support the operations of our district. So we do have a Esser transition value of one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars at this time. Our out-of-district tuitions, you can call it luck, you can call it skill, you can call it the retrograde, you can call it whatever you want. And you can also clearly give Ms. Harriman a lot of credit, but out-of-district tuitions right now are negligible. I want to caution you with that, meaning that we can fit within the line items we had from last year's budget, but I want to caution you, we could have a cost, a student that moves into our district before April first, who's placed out of district by another district and moves into our district. We, we are responsible for that cost. So that could be anywhere from sixty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars. So right now, as we continue our planning, it is a negligible increase to that budget. In technology, as you know, last year we had some technology originally within our budget. We did lease some new technology this year to try to meet the demand of moving forward. But next year we need some continued restoration and continuous improvement in technology that we put aside from last year. So that's a value of two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So what does that mean as of this week in presenting this in, in general terms and big picture for us as a school district? Keep in mind, last year's fixed cost increases were three point six million dollars. Right now, we're estimating an increase of two point six. That's a variance or a reduction of one million dollars from last year to this year. That should be celebrated. That should be, we did predict some of this, but that should be well received. Is it enough? I don't think it's enough based off of what we were talking with our communities so far. With those fixed costs, we have targeted three point five two percent as an increase for FY twenty-five to our two communities, which means that we are still in a position of reducing our budget by six hundred thousand dollars. So while I like to say that we are in good shape, we're not. There is still much work to do. We met as an administrative team today with principals, with new principals, new faces, new voices, new ideas. Unfortunately, our work tended to lean towards the items we came up with last year because as we discussed last year, where else do we go? What else do we cut? We tried a lot of ideas. We tried a lot of conceptual thoughts, programs, staff. It still comes down to staff. It still comes down to programs. The district has never, as, as I've shared with you in the last couple of years and especially last year for the override, the district doesn't have extra, doesn't have room in our budget for reductions. But right now, principals need to continue to work on identifying how we can make up a difference of six hundred and six thousand dollars so to have a somewhat expected target increase for us. Now, keep in mind, the target increase of three point five two percent is administratively our recommendation right now. I don't think it's going to be, I think even that value is going to be difficult for our communities to meet, just to be clear. So that's why we are still targeting six, roughly six hundred thousand dollars in reductions. And the last point I want to make is all of this is being done without knowing our state numbers yet. The state budget doesn't come out until the end of this month. We have an administrative meeting scheduled right, right after those numbers come out to really work on what that six oh six may look like. It may be a little more, maybe a little less. Again, we could have a student move into district. We could have something that we weren't anticipating to change this, but this is the big picture. And again, this was shared with the town administrators and representatives right now where we were at. So again, I can't, I'll be honest, since I, this is my fifth year, I've never been able to sit here and paint a pretty picture around budget. Innovation has happened because we have great people in our district that work hard, that apply for grants, that receive grants. But as far as squeezing innovation out of our operating budget, it's becoming far more difficult than ever at this point in time because the cost of doing business in a public school, and we're not alone, the cost of doing business in a public school is, is very expensive and it does cost money for our students. The, the one point I want to make is that we have seen the needs of our students. You know, most people may want to think that the year after COVID would have been the heavy year. No. We're seeing the needs of our students compounding year after year after year. It's not, it's not something that has changed. I think that we feel it most as a school district. I'm not sure if you do as a school district, but after vacation, we, we feel the needs of our students seem to become very increased when they come back from vacation and it's no fault of anyone. It's just a, a level of anxiousness. It's a level of anxiety. It's a level of need. So, you know, within our Esser funds, our school adjustment counselors, that we need to figure out a way to continue to maintain them. They're an integral part of the success of our, our school system and our students and we need to figure out a way to, to have them. They are not in this factor right now because the principal's attached with trying to figure that out, to maintain school adjustment counselors in a budget-neutral fashion. But again, coming up with six hundred thousand dollars worth of reductions, as you know, because you've experienced this as a committee, is no easy feat. It is people and programs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer, try to answer some questions from a general perspective without knowing the state budget at this point in time for us.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, as a reminder, February fourteenth, we have an all boards meeting. We've invited the town administrators and the boards of selectmen and FinCom or FAA representatives to the school committee meeting on February fourteenth. I do apologize, that is Valentine's Day. But all of our hearts will be in the right place for Dudley Charlton Regional School District. So, but that is a very important meeting and we will be presenting the fiscal year budget to, to everybody as best we know it on February fourteenth.
Great. Can we ask for like a RSVP for that meeting so we can make sure we have enough seats at the table for them?
Sure. And that meeting is here, just to be, just for everyone else.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? No? Okay. Good to see. And as we move to new business and knowing that Sophia needs to leave to make sure she studies, right? I would like to move up item C to the top so that Sophia is here for that conversation. I know we may not have votes, but we should at least have you here for that conversation because it, it's definitely a very important one to have with you here. So if you don't mind, is that okay with you?
Sure, yeah. Sure.
Okay. All right. So we'll start with the Dudley Charlton Regional School District Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-four user fees. So I know our subcommittee, our budget subcommittee had worked on some information and I'm not sure which one of you are presenting that.
I can start and.
Caitlin can supplement. We did have our meeting today and.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? Do you want Mr. A.D. Scanlon to come up for this conversation? Do you think we'll need him?
If you want, it's possible. I don't, I don't know how far we're going to take the discussion today, but.
Okay. Okay. So we, we'll put you on reserve.
But yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, sorry.
So we were, you know, presented with a lot of information and just, you know, take into consideration with, considering the fees increasing. Some of this information just opened doors for more questions about other things, but trying to stay on task with fees, that's what we will do. So when we did discuss the parking fees, I guess, do you want me to go in order of this?
However you'd like to do it. If you want to do it in a different order, that's fine too.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm going to go, well, in my, my thoughts that I put on paper, I'll just go with that. As far as parking fees, after some discussion, as the subcommittee, we were not in agreement about increasing the fees at this time. Again, we discussed a lot of things that went into, you know, parking, the parking fees, parking account, all of that. As of note, the last time those were increased was in two thousand eighteen. But that being said, we were not in agreement as far as increasing them. So I guess there could be more discussion about that. As far as the pre-K fees, we were in agreement to increase by a possible number of two hundred dollars. That would make the two half-days go from one thousand dollars to twelve hundred and then the four half-days from two thousand to twenty-four hundred. The last time this fee was increased was in two thousand eighteen. And again, there was a lot of information that was taken into consideration and that was what we kind of came to. And then as far as athletic fees, we were all also in agreement as far as an increase to athletic fees. That number could be adjusted, but by fifty dollars, so taking it from one fifty to two hundred dollars. We also were in agreement of instating a fee at the middle school level, potentially a fifty dollar per sport with a universal family cap of six hundred and fifty dollars. Again, those numbers could adjust, but that was what we discussed and agreed upon. And the last time the athletic fees were increased was in two thousand thirteen. And I know, you know, the thing we, you know, there's a lot to consider with the fiscal year twenty-five budget going forward and whether or not, you know, raising fees is still going to be something that we want to keep on the table, but these are the things that we discussed today and that was what we came up with.
Does anyone from the committee want to add anything?
So the reason why we're not looking to take a vote from the full committee tonight is because I feel like the budget season is just really starting and I think especially after that February fourteenth meeting, we will kind of see where the towns stand. Hopefully as a committee, look at what priorities everyone has and where we want to head as a district with possible cuts or, or stuff like that. So right now, this is what we're thinking for increases. And like we, like Jamie said, we're not completely all in agreement to bring forth a recommendation for the parking fees. But there was a lot of information presented over a few meetings, a lot of brainstorming, a lot of questions that led to more questions that I don't even think all of us really have all the information on yet. So it was hard to come to a, a final decision while still being presented more information. So I think that it's important over the next few meetings, we as a committee decide what our priorities are for a budget for FY twenty-five and take that into consideration moving forward with the fees too. So.
Does anyone have, you know, any members that are not on the subcommittee have any questions or would feel that they would need more information that we could ask the subcommittee to look at or ask other members to look at to be able to vote on this?
Clarifying one, just to.
Sure.
So the pre-K fees, you're saying that you were looking to increase it by two hundred, so going from a thousand to twelve hundred. What was the other number? Because I missed that.
For the four half-day.
Schedule from two thousand to twenty-four hundred.
Two hundred compared to two days.
Can I ask the committee member, and feel free, anyone can answer. So with regards to the pre-K information, did we do any analysis on other districts and what they charge?
I, this was the information that was presented to us and that wasn't part of the presentation.
Madam Chair, you'll find that it's relative to the district. It's not, there's no consistent pattern for, for, just like all fees that are set up. They just seem to start somewhere and then they just slowly increase. So we wouldn't have a, a factual understanding as to how, when they increased or why they increased or any of that nature. But I think that, I think that we are on the lower side. I think if you look at, I've been out of, out of the childcare game for a while, but the cost of childcare is obviously skyrocketed. And I, I remember not too long ago, it felt like a mortgage payment for me to, to send my kids to childcare. So I think that this is, you know, well within, if not still less than some other districts around us for the offering of pre-kindergarten experience, even for two days a week. For the year. Remember, it's a class for the year.
For the year. And so the theme kind of, when I looked at a chart that looked at all the fees and the history going back to, I want to say twenty-ten?
Two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four, okay. It seemed like over the last five or six years, it increased by two hundred, which when it went from six to eight hundred, that was like thirty-three percent. Two hundred on a thousand is only twenty percent. So it is still another two hundred dollar increase, but it's actually percentage-wise, not as big of an increase if you look at it from that perspective. And then the parking fee basically doubled relatively fast because it went from a hundred to one fifty in one year and then two hundred the following year, which was all taken within one vote. But that one was the one that had been increased most recently. And then the athletic, it had been a while and there was never a fee for middle school, which we're finding that most middle schools do not charge for sports. But I don't know what is to come for many districts. I mean, it doesn't mean just because we are everyone well, but it could be on the table for other committees as well. So.
Yeah, and I feel like when we did that parking fee increase, we definitely were looking, we had looked at other area high schools about parking fees and two hundred was right around where people had, had, had charged. So.
Regarding the parking fees, I find that that's the one that people complain about the most when they're having to write a check for that amount. So it's tough. Like I said, you know, you can drop your kids off at daycare and know that you're getting, you know, if you're sending them to preschool, you have that instant gratification. I'm getting childcare, I'm getting this. Sports, you're going to watch your kids. I understand it's a privilege to park at the school, but to a lot of parents, it just seems like a check that they write and get nothing for, especially when our parking lots and our roads are deteriorating and we don't have the money to fix it all at once. And I think at some points, we're turning away some kids, juniors and stuff, but we're not really looking at expanding our parking lot because there's so many other bigger priorities before that happens. But that's, I think, why there's so much reason to not really come to a, a solid answer just yet.
Can I ask a question? Yeah. Yeah, okay. So going back to pre-K. All right. Sorry, I'm going to go one-track mine. I'm going to be at one and then the other. So what is the total cost now that, or even just using last year's numbers? What's the actual payment that we received by people utilizing the pre-K?
And they may not have that information.
I mean, we briefly discussed it. We, we did sort of look at the costs and there was about seventy peers.
So there's seventy-nine peers, sixty-three on the IEP. So.
Yeah, then it's in the back.
I haven't looked completely, but.
So it's about a thousand dollars.
The numbers per, like, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt. But respectfully, we didn't talk about it today, but remember, there are students that may qualify for a reduction in that cost as well. So we didn't talk about that today. But let's say maximum seventy-nine.
One of my questions, but yeah.
Maximum seventy-nine thousand, but we use sixty thousand to offset the budget, to offset the pre-K program.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, and then how much is the pre-K program in all?
The cost to run the pre-K program?
Yes.
I, I was doing a wild guess of a half a million dollars. Could be more. Could be a little bit less.
Can we get numbers for that?
Sure. Can I respectfully ask how that will help decide?
You know, I'm, I'm looking at it like more that the increase is, is a small, tiny percentage of the whole of what we're actually paying out for to have that program. is a small, tiny percentage of the whole of what we're actually paying out for to have that program.
Right, so keep in mind, the request to ask the cost, which we talked about today, is going to involve a lot of details because we have to break out the related services and support services that go in there as well. So there's a percentage of those salaries that are impacted by it as well. Never mind, because most people think of it as simple as the pre-K teacher is the cost. No, there's paraprofessionals as well, there's related services. So it will be a project to come up, so that's why I'm respectfully asking how this fee adjustment will impact. Because we'll take an investment of time to break everybody, everything out, to understand the entire cost for pre-K program.
Okay.
We'll do, I'm not saying we won't do it, but I'm just, you know, there is, it's a project, come up with the total cost. So that's why I'm grossly estimating half a million dollars.
All right, I get you.
Can I ask a question? I just had a question about like the makeup of our preschool program, only because I, I think about when I had kids at that level and I could not send them to our preschool because I needed, I needed daycare and I needed a full-time program. So are the people that are sent, like, the makeup of the people that are sending their kids to the preschool, people that wouldn't necessarily need that daycare option? And would that two hun, extra two hundred put them to the point where they would say, no, forget it, we're not going to do this? Because we do need to have those peers there for our special ed students. So I don't want to, I would think that there's a balancing of how much people, like, what we can really take in or increase.
Madam Chair, it's a choice, it's clearly a choice. And if you can afford to, for twelve hundred, a thousand dollars for the year, for two days a week, and that fits in your family and your routine, that's a choice. As working parents, I agree, we needed a five-day a week, that's why I was talking about a mortgage payment for childcare. So it's ultimately a choice. I'm not sure how to drill down to figure out if we increase it by two hundred dollars, will you send your child or not? Because it's really a family dynamic and a family choice to do that. So I'm not sure how to get that, get at that information.
I think, I just think, you know, I like that we're having the conversation today because I think that if we have any preschool parents that are watching or can provide us some feedback about that, I think that would be helpful.
So I think the only thing that I have to add is, you know, a lot of times, I even looked at, Charlton has a four-day option, Dudley never has. When we looked into it, it was due to too much interest. When my girls were that age, there was going to be, I had thought this is a great opportunity to get them into the habit of going to the school multiple days in a row. You know, even though it's a half-day, I did have the capability to have someone pick them up. So I could have made it work, I did make it work with my son. I did opt for a full day for the girls because I wanted them, they were going three days a week. So sometimes I was opting because they could go a full day and longer, and I wanted to kind of build them up to that routine. Right now, every time we add either another preschool or a full day or a four-day option, we're looking at increasing our budget, which we're trying to trim. So the only way to really increase our revenue is by increasing our peers. But we're not going to increase our peers without offering something else, whether it's full day or four day or something like that. So we're kind of in a rock, in a hard place because we're not giving much more to the people of the town or expecting more. But at some point, we, if we want to help supplement that budget, we're going to have to offer more. So.
Madam Chair, and we talked about this a bunch of stuff as well. The goal of increasing more peers reduces the, as Ms. Harriman said, reduces the number of students with special needs that can be with those peers. If we try to make it more amenable for the, for the peers, then we're actually, we may be, we're increasing our program as well.
So I thought it was eight and seven.
Seven and five.
Eight and seven.
Eight and seven, but it could be, it could be fifteen peers and five special ed.
Right, but when you go to twenty peers, five, seven, and five. So eight, eight and seven, when you go to twenty peers, it's down to five students with special needs.
But you would have more classrooms potentially if we had another classroom. If we had more interest, you could increase your peers. I think if we had the interest, like, we're turning people away. We're not turning special ed away, we're turning the peers away. So if we have the interest.
But the ratio would change.
But that's where our revenue is coming from, is the peers that we're turning away. So I know it's not covering the full salaries, but eventually it would supplement.
But the thing is, is that if we're turning, if we're increasing peers, then at one point, you would need to increase the ratios, and you're not making enough money to really, you know, put that in for a paraprofessional to be there to assist, or another pre-K teacher, it's just not.
Eight to seven is fifty-fifty, fifteen to five is three to one. So it would eventually increase the revenue.
But it would never equal what we're actually paying out.
Well, we can't, we can't. I mean, nothing is ever equal to what it costs. Sports isn't equal to it, nothing is. I just, as a parent that got turned away from a general ed spot, even though he was on an IEP, it's disheartening to get turned away when you want to send your kid to the school because there's too much interest. So that's my perspective from living it.
And as a parent of someone who has children that were, was in the ILCs, I would look at it that the ratio change would not be beneficial to actually increasing my, you know, my special education, children's ability to be able to have those interactions that is IEP would be working to fulfill.
And my daughter, that's now on a five oh four, was not identified until she was later. So could she have been identified if she had gone sooner? Who knows? So with the needs of the students increasing year after year, turning away students from our district is a bad situation, in my opinion. When they could get used to the faces of the building, when they could start to see the UA teachers here and there. But instead, they're going to a daycare, which varies in what they offer, and then entering kindergarten, sometimes much further behind than the preschool students. The kindergarten teachers will tell you that, they can tell which ones went to me through a preschool and which ones didn't, and which ones went to a preschool with discipline and which ones didn't. So I think we would set up our students better off, especially with the interest that is out there in the community. If we didn't have the interest in the preschool program, this wouldn't be a fight, but we have it, and we can't entertain the idea.
And Kathleen, I think that you had asked, the two hundred dollars, are we going to be pushing those who were contemplating sending them to our schools versus daycare? Honestly, I think that if they can accommodate a half-day schedule, whether it's two days or four days a week, they're, the twelve hundred dollars for one entire school year is dramatically cheaper than.
Oh, why was actually?
Than daycare.
Yes, absolutely. I was actually saying for the people that don't use daycare, that just maybe use a grandparent and stay home. Like, are those the people that we're going to lose, that we might want to?
I think if they're interested, in my opinion, if they're interested in sending their child to the school that they're going to attend as a kindergarten, they're going to send them no matter what. And I was one of those parents. I sent my child for a two-day program, and then the following year for a four-day program. And it was to get him acclimated to Charlton Elementary because he'd be walking those halls as a kindergartner. So again, if they're home and they're the ones that are going to be behind, most likely, not always, if they're being home every single day, but if they're, if, if the opportunity is to go or to not go and stay home, I think they're going to go.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily against the two hundred.
No, I'm just.
I just, yeah, I mean, I just didn't know if there was a magic number, go ahead. And something that, it sounds like, you know, Dean is kind of alluding to, as well as I've heard, you know, the two hundred or the fifty or this, it's marginal, you know, it's marginal against our budget. Is this really going to make a difference? Well, why are we paying, charging a fee at all? I think that, you know, everything has gone up, the cost of doing business, the cost of everything. And it's not to cover everything, obviously. It's just to help defray some of the other costs, that's all.
Does anybody have any more questions about preschool? No, okay. Any parking questions? Sophia, do you have any thoughts about parking?
I'm so happy you asked me that.
I figured you might.
With someone with a parking spot, it was, like, I can hear a lot of, like, my peers and, like, other classmates when we were first getting our spots, like, at the end of last year. And it was just like, I can understand both sides, how, like, obviously, it's, there's so many student drivers in our school, so it makes sense for us to have, to pay to have a certain spot. But it's also another thing, like what they were saying before, where, like, we don't really get a benefit back from it. So a lot of people are kind of frustrated about how we have to pay, like, two hundred dollars when it was about a hundred, like, over, like, ten years ago. And we know that, like, there's obviously a need to raise the prices because of inflation and, like, other needs in our parking lot. But I can understand that, like, it raising, like, a hundred vers, like, up to two hundred from one hundred within two years is, like, kind of shocking for some people that can't afford it all the time. But, like, I don't know if there's any way where we can accommodate to certain people, like, if they voice the need for, like, needing to pay less for a parking spot, or if we get some kind of benefit back from it besides just being able to park there year-round, I don't know.
I think too, I find that at my high school, it's really about educating the students about what does the parking fee go towards. Because I think they don't know all the time.
Honestly, we don't, like.
Yeah, so I think that that's a good, it's almost good information to have when you get, like, when that parking lottery comes, do you have a lottery?
Yes, if, if you're not, it's done by seniority. So after, like, the first two, maybe three weeks in the school year, like, after the seniors can, like, park in their spots, everybody else that has their license or is planning to get it within the next few months, they're, like, entered in a lottery. And they'll, like, draw, like, a few spots for whatever spots are left. But sometimes people, like, wait it out, so there's some spots that are just, like, open, and some people, like, that want to park there, like, can't, but, yeah.
clarity, seniors, all seniors get a parking spot that asks for it. So the waiting list that you're talking about, Ms. Panzik, is for juniors.
And I know some sophomores that were born early in the year. Because I had so, I, my friend's daughter parked my driveway when she was a sophomore, because she could drive.
You should number your driveway and just.
I don't know how many would reply to it.
Okay. So are you, you would not be in favor of increasing it more than two hundred?
Correct.
Okay, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I was very hesitant to, like, say something because I was.
That's why we have you here, so we are happy to always hear your voice. And that's important. And I think too, like, when you go back to the students and talk to them, get their input too, because we're going to keep talking about this, and we want to hear their voices too.
Yeah, and obviously, like, I have so much time left, but I know, like, my little sister, like, she's working to get her license in the near future. Like, I know a lot of my friends from, like, other classes that want to have a parking spot in the future so they don't have to take the bus, or they don't have to rely on a parent to take them to school because I know there's complications in that, but yeah.
Kathleen, can I ask you a question?
You can. And then I know that we have questions in the audience, I'm just waiting till we finish the conversation, then the committee members, go ahead.
You mentioned your fees and making sure the students know what they're, they're paying for. What kinds of things do your fees cover in your district?
We have a parking revolving account, and it, and it covers fees associated only to the parking lot. Like, so any resurfacing, like, repaving, like, we painted numbers this year on all our, all our, all our things, all our spaces.
So maintenance for that parking lot only?
Yes, however, I will, yes, it's for our parking lot only. However, we are a regional district.
Only at the high school.
Only at the high school level for regional. So it's each, each town is its own, and then the high school, it's its own and regional, so.
How much do you charge?
That doesn't help us at all.
Sorry, so we charge, we used to charge one hundred each semester. And we found that people were not, I don't think they paid as much. I think we do give that option. We charge one eighty for the year if you pay in full, so.
And do you have to turn people away, or is your parking lot big enough for anyone?
So this is the fir, like, last year, I don't think we had a lot of people paying. And this, and it was kind of like a free-for-all, and we had a lot of kids coming in late because they were trying to figure out where to park in the morning. So this year, we numbered them, and we had a lottery where we had, like, seniors could come and sign up first, and we had kids waiting outside at five in the morning to get their parking spot. It was really funny, it was a good time. But yeah, so we do it that way. I think we're going to do a lottery based on attendance percentage.
So some incentive?
Kind of some incentive for good attendance.
But for clarity, you can accommodate everybody who wants one?
I can accommodate anybody who wants one.
You can?
I can, we have a big parking lot.
Do you still do a lottery? Is it lottery for the numbered spot, for the close to the building?
They have a packing order, they want certain spots.
Because it's easier to get out, or?
There's a senior lot, and there's a junior lot, and then there's an upper lot, like, there's lots all over the buildings they want. And if they can beat the buses in a certain spot, they want that too, so, yeah.
That's like what you said with the tier, literally tiered.
Yeah, we could write a book on our parking.
Yeah, I mean, I had to park on a mountain and walk down it to get to my high school, so I get it, literally.
So I just look at this, though, because I'm going through, looking at the athletic fees and, I'm sorry.
We're not at athletics yet, slow the roll, sorry.
Do we have anything about parking still to talk about? Did you have a question about parking only?
We can hear all about your school's parking, but how about what the expenses are, how they are spent here in Dudley and Charlotte?
Okay.
Now, if you can't answer it at this meeting, maybe in a future meeting.
Right.
Can we answer here? Very similar to what Chair Kamignani said, it's used to upgrade or update this parking lot here. It's in a revolving account. So for example, this year, we had to put in a curb cut at our front entrance so that the money was used from there to do that. It's for maintenance, upkeep, painting. We've used it for security cameras so we can monitor the parking lots. That was obviously a very expensive cost. I, I think I've covered most of it, but, you know, Shepherd Hill, to me, has, I think it's a reflection that we have the revolving account for Shepherd Hill. Let me phrase it this way, because if you look at all of our other parking lots at our other six schools, we don't have revolving accounts for those parking lots. And so Shepherd Hill, to me, has the best parking lot in the district, without question. So it's, it's for all of that upkeep and everything that goes on. One of the things that we're concerned about recently now is the granite curbs are now leaning towards the parking lot, which are, could puncture tires if you're, because of the way that, the angle in which they're leaning up against them. But, you know, we, we may not have the finance to do that if we do something different. But that's what the money's really used for.
I may follow up a little bit, please. Additionally, LED lights were installed, you know, as a cost-saving measure, obviously, but that was a significant outlay of funds. And roughly a hundred and fifty-seven thousand was spent on repaving and fixing the parking lot back in the early two thousand teens.
And then the last thing, on the extreme winter, winter funds could be, would be accessed for cleanup from winter weather on the extreme end of it. Just for Shepherd Hill.
Did you have any other questions?
I was just making sure that the winter snow removal was part of that because if you didn't have that parking, it'd probably be half the price for clearing the snow for a staff.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
So you mentioned before that people would pay, like, one hundred, like, per semester to park there. Do we still offer that, or does it?
No, that was my school.
Okay. Because I was gonna, sorry, I was just going to ask, like, why we don't offer that now? Only because I know a lot of people can manage to pay, or at least cough up, like, two hundred dollars for a parking spot, but it's really hard for parents and students to do that upfront, so. parents and students to do that upfront. So is there any way we can maybe do that by semester if?
Madam Chair, and Sophia, you also brought up, um, the costs and all that kind of stuff. I know that high school administration works with students on the cost and payment plans if they need to and all of that.
Hmm.
I've I've had that conversation with high school administration.
Okay.
Any other questions about parking? And you can feel free to talk to, talk to Principal L L about that too, about how he handles that and
Hmm.
you know, just so the kids understand.
Hmm.
Any, any other questions about parking? Okay, so now we'll move on to athletics. So what questions do we have about athletic fees? Did you have questions?
I have an overall question.
Okay.
All right. So I'm looking at this and I'm, and yeah, I am gonna think, okay.
So wait, you're looking at which ones so we can all be looking?
All of it. So I'm, so, but basically the athletic fees and the parking, right? Because I'm also thinking about, all right, I have a student at Shepherd Hill, right? I have two students over at the middle school, all right, and you know, I'm thinking about, all right, I am basically gonna be nickled and dimed my way, right? So if there's already, you know, there's a reduced amount for, you know, like if you filled out the free and reduced lunch waiver form, right? And you have, and you go under free lunch and then it's waived, okay? Or if you're reduced and then you have a reduced amount, that's that, you know, and then also what if you're just above that and you don't get those things, but yet you're working on driver's ed. That's what eight hundred fifty, I think the reduced amount's seven hundred. You're talking about, oh, if you're doing this, this sport, this is, you know, right now a hundred fifty with a cap, you know? And now then introducing middle school fees, it's like, okay, so by having everybody do something that they would like to do to have that enrichment and that, you know, have that sense of teamwork and being able to build and, you know, having that student life experience. I'm already starting at the gate like of having, you know, finding like an extra thousand dollars. So I'm just thinking about other families, cause I know I'm not the only one that has kids throughout multiple schools. And even having a family cap of what was six hundred is still kinda hefty.
So we had discussed like if you wanted a cap universally or if it would be a middle school cap and a high school cap. Um, we had asked Mr. Scanlon what would be the easiest, he thought, at each school individually. But because of so many families having multiple kids at each different level, I thought it would be harder to keep track of and and some families might hit their cap at certain areas if one year and then it changes the next year. I think a universal cap was gonna be the easiest thing district wide. The reason why I think the three of us came to an agreement about increasing is mostly because it was on the chopping block last year. And no, this increase is not going to cover the costs to run an athletic program. But it's going to help it and we know going into fiscal year twenty five, we're gonna be dealing with some of the same issues. Of possibly eliminating middle school sports, possibly eliminating JV teams or whatever. So the fact that we're constantly putting those on the chopping block, we really need to step back and say, how can we try to supplement these accounts to at least keep them available because at, at some point, they might not be available to anyone. So that was kind of why we took the direction we did with this fee.
And then, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Do you wanna ask the question?
I had a quick question, um, maybe more for Director Scanlon. I, I know that we do not, you're probably one of the only athletic directors that is an athletic director for six to eight, six to twelve, correct? Yes, okay. So, and I, I believe that you're probably one of the only athletic directors that does not have administrative support. Yes, okay. So I'm just wondering like how much more, I think we have to think about when we do raise the fees, like, and I'm not saying we do or we don't. I'm just saying we also need to think about the impact it has on our current staff and how much are we, like, who's gonna absorb that, that, all that, um, administrative detail? And what, what is the cost of that? It, it may be a good thing or may not. I don't know.
I don't know how much added work it will be to increase the amount.
Okay.
We already have a cap. I know we're instituting or proposing to institute a fee at the middle school level. And yes, that might be added work, but everything else is the same amount of work in my eyes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Have you had more questions?
I do, sorry. Um, so, okay, so then looking at the information that was provided in the packet and um, there's a lot of unknowns in this table. And I was also looking where the differences between one school to another school, right? So when I'm looking at it and I'm thinking, oh, athletic fee information for, you know, if we're thinking about increasing the fees and wanting to see what other like ones we're doing, I would really try to find it within, I mean, it's great that it's under midwatch, you know, midland, yeah, midwatch, if I say it, yeah. Um, but, you know, we're not Marlboro. You know, we're not, we're not like, um, that's what's a nice one here, like, you know, we're not West Boylston, you know? I, it's just, I would prefer to see ones that had a similar regional size, um, operating budget if possible and tax base. So we're actually comparing like to like instead of like to, kind of maybe it's a public school. You know, it's just, we happen to be in the same league.
The Swickle towns on the second half of the sheet are reflective of the surrounding towns. Granted, I understand they're not district, but there aren't any districts near us. Besides, um, again, I mean, Tintaspa, but again, we're, we're not talking apples to apples.
That's what I'm saying, like even if you had to go
Right.
And look at other, other similar type regionals and, you know.
And that's why the.
In that situation.
Find any similar type regions?
Which is why the local towns are included. I think, I think this, this was a very thorough, um, exhausting list and, you know, we, we don't.
But there's also still a lot of unknowns on this list.
I mean.
Those middle school fees?
Um, the only thing that I learned after I looked at this was like Auburn doesn't charge a, a fee, but it does charge fees for school choice students. So those students choosing to go to Auburn for their hockey are getting charged. Even though their own students are not. Um, and that was something that we talked about a little bit overall, that some districts that have a lot of school choice programs might not charge their own students, but they're charging those school choice. And I just brought up Auburn because I know a lot of people do school choice out there for their hockey, for their rink, and hockey is such an expensive sport that a lot of people are looking for, a lot of people went to my high school for hockey. You know, not a lot of high schools offer it, so that's usually something that people target. Um, and it's very expensive, so it was surprising to see no, but there is fees coming in. So even though it says no, it could mean no for most, but yes for some. Um, but then if you look at Bartlett, they don't charge, but they also get a lot more chapter seventy funding. So it's, it's tough to compare. You wanna look at a town next to us, but their, their demographics are different for that reason. Um, you look at Algonquin and that's different, you know, the towns are set up similar.
And I, I called, I called Quabin, um, cause I used to be from the Quabin region and, uh, talked with them and the five sixty six, yeah, that's the high school, the middle school has three hundred students and they currently don't charge fees. Before the pandemic, they charged about a hundred ten dollars for sports and they had a cap and then they also, um, had the free and reduced waivers. And then, um, when they reopened after COVID, the athletic director went to the school committee to request that they remove those fees. And so now, um, there are no fees and they, even though they have a decreased student enrollment, they have an increased amount of students in athletics.
Do you, um, A.D. Scanlon, do you think if, and I know it's hard because I, like, I don't know that my high school A.D. would know the middle school cost, but do you think it would be appropriate, like, could we send this list out to the A.D.s? And see if they could fill in anything for us?
Yeah, I mean, so a lot of the unknowns that you're seeing, the, the, the majority of this list is maintained by our lead athletic director.
Oh, okay.
And so they're inputting information. So, you know, I put unknown, in all likelihood, it's probably nothing. Um, because they just didn't put anything in there. Some people put none or zero.
Yeah.
Some people put absolutely nothing. It's not as organized as that list if you're looking at.
Okay.
It's more of just a sort of a half-hazard spreadsheet where I was throwing in their school name and what their structure is. And so some people put three paragraphs of information, some people simply put a number. Um, and so I tried to decipher through it to find, you know, and then looking at some of the websites and trying to, you know, speaking with some of my colleagues to get those numbers. Um, you know, and then from the, the previous district that I was in, I think we had gone through this process. Um, in a district that did not assess fees at all. And prior to the pandemic, we were exploring the first ever implementation of fees. And so that was in the Southern Western County League, the Swickle, and you know a lot of that. Granted, things pre-pandemic, most pandemic are much different. Uh, and my understanding is, you know, that that district still to this day does not charge fees, even though we went through, you know, basically years of the process. Um, so the, the unknowns, as I, you know, if I'm speaking offhand here, are more likely than not a no or a zero. And for example, you know, as, uh, as Costello said, you know, Quabin could be listed right now as, you know, and they show a number that was the most recent number they put in and it may change because of pandemic related, uh, issues in a lot of places. You know, for example, when you look at our totals over the last two years, my first year in was twenty twenty, uh, right after the pandemic, and we saw, we reduced our fees across the board because our seasons were so impacted and modified with the restrictions and COVID-related things. So, um, it's, it's incredible fluctuation. There's a lot of parallels, I think, between the pre-K conversations and here in terms of demographics. And it's, it's, it would be incredibly difficult to find a, a, a like district to ours with this scenario and the context that we're in. Um, a lot of those schools in Southern Western County League, and certainly several of the ones that you would look at, even in the middle exclusively, I think, you know, the, the, uh, in terms of their funding and in terms of their, uh, low income, in terms of their high needs percentage, uh, with their student population, you're finding a lot of these districts that are larger districts and may have a, um, you know, a greater socioeconomic demographic status in town, may not be charging fees or maybe charging, uh, offering a lot more waivers. And Bartlett's a perfect example where, you know, there were discussions around fees and having fees, but when they look, it's at seven percent of our students are on free and reduced lunch. That doesn't make sense for us to implement fees.
Right.
Um, you know, we're not at that number, uh, but we, we have a significant number of students that, families that are on free and reduced lunch as well, which we offer. Just to clarify, full waiver regardless of free or reduced, it's we, we waive it in full. There's no, there's no step down between reduced and free.
Good to know.
Thank you. I was just writing that down. Okay.
So if we go to the DESI website for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four enrollment, just for Shepherd Hill and Lone, our high needs percentage is thirty seven point six and our low income is thirty percent. For the student population.
Well, I think, I personally thank the committee for doing all this work, cause I think that's really, it's good for us to have this. And I think as we have budget discussions coming up, these are definitely options that we have. And maybe things that we might have to look at.
And then since we're also talking about like for middle school, you know, Dudley Middle School has a high needs population of fifty one point eight percent and a low income of forty point two. So I just think instituting fees might not be the best at, at this moment.
It also doesn't mean the forty percent are going to play a sport. Could only be twenty percent of the, I'm sorry, fifty percent of the forty percent that play a sport.
It's true, but people should have the options as well as their peers.
We're trying to keep the options on the table.
I would, I, I understand that, but I'd like to not introduce further barriers.
I think what we heard though, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that anyone in that population would not be paying that.
If I, the one thing I would say, it's, you're gonna have to believe at this point, it's obviously participating in anything is, is, uh, an option. And also, you know, we, we work with families that may not have financial needs. Uh, we're, we're never turning away a student if they can't pay. Um, and it, it's, it's abundantly clear that these fees are simply an offset, uh, you know, that they're not forty percent, twenty percent, eighty percent. It's, it's, any money that comes in is just, it's, it's an offset. Um, you know, and not that I would advocate for going fee crazy, but also, you know, the situation that we're in, I can understand that fees would help, any amount would help to offset the cost of these because of the, the cost of doing business, um, officiating and transportation. Um, you know, we've seen, we have one district bus, which is a huge benefit to us and a huge cost savings.
Yeah.
Um, when we're looking at after-school transportation, enormous cost savings in comparison to a lot of other districts. Um, but we, you know, we also have trained drivers in-house to do that. And, uh, you know, when people are unavailable, we're, I've been getting invoices from First Student, uh, you know, and in other bus companies where First Student is able to provide a driver, transportation is going up exponentially over the years. Um, and that's a, that's a huge cost driver just in the operations of the program, let alone stipends, let alone officiating, uh, costs, uh, you know, whatever may be assignment costs, and the list goes on. But any little bit is an offset. And so I think, uh, Miss Costello's point is an excellent one. I do think the other mechanism in place to address any of those students that may not be able to do it, and I don't have that number at the middle school. To the center's point, I don't know, because we've never assessed the fees.
Right.
Never really had the information to tell us, you know, roughly fifteen percent of students participating in sports at the middle schools qualify for free and reduced lunch versus five percent or four thirty, four forty percent.
Can.
So that's something where we would, I think we would learn that, but we don't necessarily have that data to operate on.
And I think for our families, it would be really important to understand that that information is kept highly confidential. That that's not even something that the coach would understand or know that they, that they did not have to pay to us fees. So, um, as we go forward and we're, I know we're in the season of spring sports registration at the high school, correct, or soon to be?
Halfway through the winter.
If, if I was a parent and my child was going to be going into spring sports and I needed some relief, how would they, how, what would they do to contact someone and who would they contact to get that?
Yeah, so part of the registration process and she's, you know, there, there's an entire section about the fees, what they're going to pay. How much it's going to be, um, you know, and basically acknowledgement and understanding that you will, will be responsible for a fee. And then at the bottom, there is a caveat, you can select that either we believe we may qualify for a waiver.
Okay.
And we can notify that. We also put a, a note in there to say, just to reach out directly to try to eliminate any confusion.
Okay.
Twenty-five hundred people check the box and doesn't come out through the report the right way. Um, and then we also have another caveat there that if you are experiencing financial hardship to reach out directly to me um, or for, or essentially, or if people are made off the staff, and we'll come up with a payment plan or, you know, it's really sort of a subjective thing, you know, and I have worked with families all this year. Same way that I've reached out and they paid a, a fall fee, no problem, and then they said this winter, you know, we're going through uptime. Would it be possible if we did fifty dollars by December first and fifty dollars by January first and yet we, we always work with them.
Great. Thank you for that. Great. Thank you for that information. Sophia, did you have any comments or? No? Okay. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Thank you for all that information. And I think, like I said, as we move forward, we're going to have some tough decisions to make because it's going to be a tough budget season. So, thank you. So let's keep moving on?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you for staying.
Well past your time.
Go study. Okay. Great. So we'll go back to A. Excuse me, the report of the Director of Finance and Operations, Director Matthews?
I'm sorry, was public comment the only thing he had? Because we missed public, we skipped over public comment.
We didn't skip over, no one had a public comment. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Stefan's just getting warmed up. Mr. Sanchez?
Okay. So go ahead, Director Matthews.
Thank you very much. Provided today to school committee was an update on the FY24 budget. So there's no expectation that school committee needs to act on this information as it's phase one of, two phases of this information. What I tried to do in this particular set of documents and information was provide school committee an update on revenues, specifically the regional transportation reimbursement revenue. I'll painfully remind the committee of last April-ish, last spring-ish, as we were meeting with the town of Charlton and discussing where we were at and their assessment and all of that. And we had made the comment that, oh, it's completely unexpected that we would get a huge influx of new revenue to help lower that assessment. Lo and behold, the State House came out with their version of the budget, which provided for a hundred percent reimbursement for regional transportation. The subsequent action was not quite as favorable. So in the Senate version and in the consensus budget, that was finally approved, that reimbursement was not at a hundred percent. In doing the math, and that's what I tried to spell out in the memo, of the expected amount, which is based on the FY23 expenditures, so the number that appears on the cherry sheet each and every year for regional transportation is an estimate. But then that estimate turns into an actual based on what would be filed. So that estimate was based on the FY22 end-of-year report, and then the actual is based on the FY23. My estimation is based on that revenue number that was used. There'll be a shortfall of over three hundred thousand dollars. That shortfall can be made up with the surplus revenue that we have sitting in the revolving account from FY23 revenue received versus what was budgeted. So in essence, it's a wash, but what that does do is set up FY25 to have a funding gap. Now, there is an expectation because we're spending more in FY24, as alluded to previously, with our new contract, our expenses did increase fairly dramatically. We will be reimbursed for those expenses. We don't know yet exactly what percentage, and we don't know yet the percentage of riders that qualify. But again, you'll be able to offset a fair amount of the dollars used here, but not all of it. So it does set up a bit of a funding cliff. But I guess the question for the committee that we can talk about today or in the future is whether you want that funding cliff to hit now and look at mid-year budget reductions, or do you want to have, wait until the FY25 state budget information is received and understand where everything stands and see what that picture looks like. The second piece of the update included an update of expenditures to account for the two hundred thousand dollar reduction voted by school committee. As you can see, most of those reductions came from salary of the assistant superintendent, as well as change in assessment for charter schools from the state. However, there was a large increase in unemployment costs, not unexpected, since we were unable to formally sign contracts because we did not have an approved budget as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So in essence, the months of July and August for unemployment ate up our entire budget of fifty-seven thousand dollars. So that transfer of, I think, around fifty-one thousand dollars is meant to cover us for the rest of the year. Hopefully, this is a one-year anomaly, and we can achieve a level of budget savings, you know, in FY25. Again, the twenty-five, thirty, fifty thousand dollars is not going to be a make or break item, but every little bit does help ultimately. I don't know if there are any specific questions on any of these changes, but again, I wanted to get this information out to school committee, give the explanation tonight, set the expectation that I'm not looking for a vote tonight, and encourage you to, if you don't have questions this evening, or they're still being formed, to reach out to me.
Does anyone have any questions at this time? Need to digest?
Hey, firstly, I'd rather see what the cherry sheets bring before I like, really dive into this, to make that, see if we're cutting something now as well as.
And we expect those a lot earlier this year. We expect the end of January?
Yeah, they're back, the state will be back to its normal timeframe. Again, you know, unfortunately, the cherry sheets are estimates, and they don't, while the opportunity was there during COVID and the recommend, the thought process was shared with the state from little old me of, hey, why don't you get to the point where you're doing this so that we know that the cherry sheets are actually accurate? They didn't take advantage of that timing and that opportunity to do that, to make that change.
Any other comments?
Next is a capital update on the architectural review. As the committee is very well aware, our capital plan is going forward and has been very successful. One of the last phases of this is the architectural review of what was originally planned to be just the six schools. However, as again, the committee is very well aware, our expected participation in the MSBA program for renovation or replacement did not come to fruition. However, the votes against participation in the MSBA program and the reimbursements that it offered did not remove the needs for repairs at Shepherd Hill. As a result, the option of providing an architectural review for Shepherd Hill was included in the procurement of the firm to perform the architectural review. This service was quoted by, at twenty thousand dollars by Habib and Associates, the successful respondents in the procurement process. In discussing this with the capital outlay and schools safety subcommittee, it was thought appropriate to bring this additional expense forward to the full school committee for consideration. The original budget for the project was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The additional services for this review, again, was quoted at twenty thousand dollars. So by including Shepherd Hill, the total expense would be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which still leaves the overall expenses of the capital plan well below the seven point five million dollar authorization.
I would entertain a motion to approve the additional twenty thousand into the capital plan for the architectural review.
So, Monica?
Second? So we'll break it in a second. Is there any discussion?
Make it only make sense.
Yeah, we, we both, you know, in our, in our capital outlay and safety subcommittee, we both agreed with this. We just thought it was a big number and we wanted to make sure that we brought it back to the committee so that we were in public and transparent about it. We were in public at that point, too, but we just wanted to make sure you all had a voice as well. Okay, seeing no further comments, move to a vote. All those in favor? And that's who needs.
Thank you. The last item I have on the agenda is disposal of surplus equipment. The district is looking to declare the seven risograph copiers listed below as surplus equipment and items to be disposed of. We have replaced these with new machines at the two middle schools, one per school. So we've gone from seven risographs in the district now down to two. As you can see from the dates, they have served the district well with lifespans ranging between thirteen years and seventeen years.
Great. I didn't see a motion to dispose of surplus equipment as noted. So move by Kelly. Second by Jamie Tullow. Any comments or questions? Please give them a good thank you on the way out.
We will indeed thank them for their long service. And the last thing I'd like to Oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor? Great. Motion carries.
I'm glad I got the prediction on the vote right, at least this time.
Yeah, you did.
And just one last note, the district has successfully transitioned to the new school ERP Pro, Infinite Vision software platform. Our first payroll was processed on that last week. There was very minimal contact from employees with questions or concerns, and it was an overall huge success and helps to wrap up our implementation of this new software. Congratulations really do need to be extended to Diane Wilson, Mary Alonzerbone, Erin Clark, and Erin Glenn for their perseverance in ensuring this project was not delayed any further and that the district hit the goal of a smooth transition at calendar year end. The timing was perfect, the implementation was extremely well done, and those four deserve kudos.
And I believe they went above and beyond the needed time to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you to them. Okay. Do, should be said to put a letter in their file from the school committee?
That's something that past school committees had certainly done for large projects like this and large successful items.
Does anyone have any concerns on that?
Not good.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Great. Moving on to B, report of the acting assistant superintendent and the Dudley Elementary School principal, Ms. True. You're up.
Hello, everyone. How are we? So I included three things in the folder for you tonight to look through. A lot of the information, we've kind of talked a little bit about before, but I wanted you just to get a sense of where people are going to be on Friday, what we're going to be doing on Friday, and just kind of what the day is about. So, in the morning, most of our staff, all of our general education staff will be attending sessions on least restrictive environment, which we know is a goal of ours for this year, next year, probably the next few years. All of the special ed staff and related service providers were trained on October sixth, and now we're branching that out to the greater general ed population so that we can all kind of be on the same page. What Heather Harriman and I, I think, are hoping from this is that eventually we'll move into more of a coaching model with least restrictive environment where we're providing support in how to deliver inclusive practices within each building. So this kind of lays the groundwork for us with least restrictive environment with our general education staff and our special education staff. So it's a good big step in the, in the right direction in that part. During that time, our special ed and related service providers will be attending a session on the new IEP, which is really important because that will be implemented very soon as well. And that takes a little bit of getting used to. So after they're trained in that, we'll then bring that out to the general ed staff and, and make that more widespread, which will be great, probably next year at some point. In the morning, our health and PE teachers are going to be doing some CPR certification pre-work because they'll be trained in the afternoon on CPR. So we'll have all of our PE and health teachers recertified in CPR, which will be great. And that is something that they asked for, that they wanted to have time to do because it is quite time-consuming for them to do it. So I think they're happy about being able to do that. I'm happy to report, we had about almost a hundred and fifty staff members that either wrote proposals or were included in proposals, which I thought was a pretty healthy number. It's, you know, we have a staff of probably about five hundred professional staff, so to have a hundred and fifty, I think, is pretty good. And the proposals, the building principals and I went through every proposal. We looked at them in terms of how they relate to our district plan. That was one of the parameters under the proposals that they needed to align to one of our goals on our district plan. And people submitted really well-written, very relevant things for their proposals. It's all work that really needs to be done, especially for different departments, different grade levels. They all had really relevant work and things that they asked for. So there weren't any proposals that were denied. Some were sent back with some tweaks and some questions, but everybody's proposals were accepted after they were worked through. And I think that people are really happy about being able to kind of follow their own path of the work that they need to do for their own disciplines on that day. So I think people are pretty pleased with that. In the afternoon, we're going to be going on with our sessions. So we have some people that are doing proposals in the morning because they're not part of least restrictive environment, some people that are doing them just in the afternoon, and then we have some staff that aren't required to do LRE in the morning. So they were able to write a proposal for the whole day. There are some departments that'll be doing that for the whole day. So there's a lot of variability there. But we did bring in, we have seven different presenters that are coming in the afternoon, or we have a couple of things that are online, but most of them are in person. We have seven different offerings, and we have a smattering of people from all across the district in every offering. Our highest numbers were in executive function. So we have BrainTrax coming, who's a DESI provided, or DESI-sponsored company that's going to be doing some training in executive functioning. And that was a really popular one. A lot of people are going to that. I think that one's going to be very good. I'm going to try and attend it myself in the afternoon. We'll see if I can stay there, but I do at least want to get to part of that. We have a UDL session that's going on. We have a math building thinking classroom session that one of our DESI grant consultants is going to be running for us. And that one, I think, is going to be really good. I might try and stop into that one, too. I have too many things that I want to do. The second highest rated one was the artificial intelligence in the classroom with the Kerlocks Group. That one seems like it's a very, very popular one, especially among middle school and high school. But we did have some elementary people that are in that offering, too. And I think that that's great because it has so much that it can offer, and we kind of need to start to embrace that. So there's a lot of people that are signed up for that one as well. Our paraprofessional staff, I'm excited about. We entered into a contract with a company called Master Teacher, and Master Teacher has about a hundred and seventy different online power courses that powers can take. And we entered into a year-long agreement with them. It was, it was pretty reasonable for having a year-long subscription with them. And the powers have their choice of the hundred and seventy courses. They can kind of select their own learning based on their own job description. Some people need to work on collecting data. Some people need to work on inclusion strategies. You know, there's a lot of different types of paraprofessionals that we have that support students in different ways. So I think it's important that they also have choice and are able to do things that are really specific for them. So they seem really excited about that. In fact, I went on yesterday just to look at the platform, and somebody had already gotten in there and done a course. It's like, wow, it's not even the professional development day. So that was exciting. It looks really good to me, and I hope that it looks as good as, as I think it is. The good thing about having it for the year is, you know, we have some other days this year, usually in May, we have a half-day, and that's usually spent around transitioning planning with teachers. So I think, you know, having that available for that day, when it comes to the fall, when we have parent-teacher conferences and our paraprofessional stays, it's a really good opportunity for them to be able to get some PD in during that time. So now we have this for the next year and can use it and can plan on that kind of stuff. So I think that's going to be really great. We had a lot of paraprofessionals that chose to continue. They had a choice for their afternoon as well, just like our professional staff. And some actually are going to be attending different things like the executive functioning training. Some might even be in the AI training. But a lot of them elected to stay and continue working through the site. So they, as you can see in the paraprofessional training document, they have a certain requirement. If they're just doing it in the morning, they have to complete two courses. There's built-in time for collaboration where they can share what they're learning and talk about that at different times. And then if they're doing it in the afternoon as well, then they have some built-in collaboration time for that. So some of them are actually So some of them are actually included in teacher proposals, too, some of the paraprofessionals, so I think that's great. They'll be, some will be working with the teachers that they work with on a regular basis to complete some work. So there's, there's kind of a wide variety there, which is what I wanted, so I'm happy about that. A lot of our elementary staff is enrolled in the Renaissance Star Math and Freckle Training, which is something that's really relevant to them right now because they're giving their first Star Math assessment, which is the new universal screener that we have for math, and then that ties into our learning platform of Freckle. And so they, they wanted to learn a little bit more about that, so we have that session going on. Heather Harriman had set us up with Read and Write for Google and Orbit Note through Text Help, which is a platform that makes reading and writing more accessible to everyone. And so we, we have an account there, and we have a lot of people who are interested in how to use that and how to make all of their content more accessible for the students. So we have a lot of people that are signed up for that particular session, which is great. I think that's it, yeah. Those are all of our sessions that we're going to be doing. We're spread out all over the place, pretty much all over the district with all of our different sessions and things that are going on based on capacity, but it's, it sounds to me, the feedback that I've gotten so far, that people are pretty happy with the selections, that there's a lot of variety in things that they can do, and, you know, they've always had the opportunity to self-select and submit a proposal if they had other ideas of things, if they didn't like what they saw for our choices. So I, I think pretty, people will be pretty happy with it. I just hope that all of our sessions pan out to be as good as they seem like they're going to be. So they, everybody will have an exit ticket to fill out at the end of the day, and I put a little special caveat in there of, don't skip this step because it's really important for the PD committee to get feedback on everything that we're doing and everything that we did because we're really trying to do what we're asking them to do with the kids and tailor things more to the individual and to make things more accessible to everyone. So hopefully, it is going to be a fantastic day. I think it is, it's been a lot of work, but I, you know, it's all organized and it's, it's ready to go. The document that I shared with you is, just so that you could see, it's the document that has the green highlighting on it. I highlighted, as I got people's proposal, sorry, and they were approved, I highlighted them green to make sure we knew where everyone was going. But I just took the teacher names off it, just so you could see people from different schools and what they were signing up for, what the most popular ones were, and just so you can see where people are going across the district. So are there any questions about where people are going or any of those sessions?
I have a question.
And I think this is great. I think that staff is really gonna, gonna benefit from, benefit from, from this type of professional development. So I like that there's a lot of choices that are really geared towards individual needs. I guess I'm just curious if there was kind of a, a theme throughout some of these proposals for, I mean, I'm sure you'll discuss it in your PD group.
Yeah, so the, the proposals that were submitted by different places, by different people. So most of them were curriculum-related in terms of curriculum development. There was, you know, some people who are still working on curriculum mapping, like our PLTW teachers have been working for a couple of years on curriculum mapping, and they don't, they don't have the time and ability to get together with their cross counterparts. So, you know, for them to be able to get together and do that. I know with our OpenEd, our science grant for OpenSciEd, the, all the science teachers across district are getting together first at their grade level and then as a team to talk about what's working, what's not working. So like, there is definitely a lot of carryover in terms of curriculum development and things that people are working on. The foreign language teachers are getting together and they are working on finishing. They have been doing some online work with foreign language where they're going through modules and they're doing that, and they are taking advantage of this time to be able to go through some of that. There's like some 504 work that's going on with our counselors that are also our 504 coordinators. They elected to get together to streamline some of our systems to be able to do that. So it's all, it's really meaningful work that's going to be happening that needs to get done, that we don't necessarily have the time carved out for them to be able to do. So it's nice for them to be able to take advantage and for everyone to be off at the same time so that they can kind of go cross, cross-district and get everyone together and collaborate. That was the biggest theme from the last professional development, was they, they really appreciated time to sit and be with each other and be able to talk about the important things that they need to talk about that affect them every day. So that's, the proposals mainly centered around really, you know, job-specific and role-specific responsibilities.
Awesome. Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so it seems like, I think it's going to be good. Yeah. I'm hoping for positive feedback.
Thank you for all your work with that.
Yes, of course.
Madam Chair in school committee, I just have to, I just feel obligated to thank Kelly True. In my five years here, I think this is the best organized, I, it's, this is feedback you've received not only from me, from your peers and everybody else in staff, but I want the committee to know that as well. This is an incredible lift, but it's going to pay huge dividends for our staff and for our district as well. And I just want to reiterate, keep in mind that Kelly's day job is principal of the elementary school. So the...
It is.
So the amount of effort that goes into this is evident, based off of all the work that you've done and what it looks like, and I agree, I think that this is an exciting day for our district on Friday. So thank you.
And I have to say that people did, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a shift when you go to self-selected PD and self-driven PD. It's not the same as being told, this is what we're doing, and we're going here and we're doing this. So we're kind of all in training right now for how this is done, how to write proposals, how to, you know, to do all of this. And I have to say that for the first time around this year with asking teachers to do this, they've done a really, really nice job with writing proposals, with, you know, being able to articulate what their needs are, being able to organize themselves in a way that, you know, makes sense and is meaningful for them. I think that we're, we're on our way to being able to do even more kind of flexible and innovative things with professional development, the more that we get into doing some of this work. So this is the ground, we're on the ground floor, but we're, we're going up, we're moving up. So it's good. It'll be good.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Great, so that moves us down to D. And D is the subcommittee updates, so budget and finance. Do you have any further updates that you want to provide?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Capital outlay and safety, do you have, Kelly, do you have any further updates for us?
I don't really think so. We're wrapping up a lot of things with the roofs and, you know, starting, circling back around, starting with the, the reviews of the school, so we'll be bringing some other things to the table pretty soon, I'm sure.
Great. Great. And policy review?
Policy review, we weren't able to meet last week, so we have a meeting coming up that we were scheduled to.
Okay, so we'll move the items here to the next meeting?
Yep.
Great. And if people still have any feedback, can they still provide that?
It's always open, yeah.
Always there, yeah.
Great, okay. Wonderful. All right, that brings us down to executive session. Before we move into that, is there any questions, concerns that the committee has that we should address now? No?
Since we're going to move into executive session, can we move up the, what is it? The, when we talk about future agenda items? Can we talk about that now?
Yes, let's talk about that right now. That's great.
So one of the things, since it's the, you know, halfway mark of the, of the school pretty much, since we're now in January, is one of our fiscal responsibility goals was to commission an operational audit during this school year, and I think that's something that we should put on as a future agenda item to ensure that we're following up on it, especially as it could help alleviate concerns with FY25 moving forward, that we're being as fiscal responsible, fiscally responsible with the money that we're being given through the assessments.
Great. Okay. Did anyone else have anything for future agenda?
Just the DC.
Yeah. Yep, we'll do DC, yeah.
I can follow up with you if they could make that the next meeting, the January 24th meeting?
Can you just let them know, too, that we can put them at the front of the agenda?
Okay.
So that they can go, like, right after?
Okay. I'll do that.
Then that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I have two more.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Since we're gearing up full swing for budget season, I think it would be good to, you know, invite school councils as well, just so we're all swimming in the same direction. And then also the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. Thank you.
Do you, can you go back to them and ask your board?
Yeah, I'll be there next week, so.
And I'm on the board.
Just ask what, what a good timeframe is. I may not, you know, depending upon the dates, we can try to get them in.
Like April.
You think April?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? And just remember, we have, yeah, okay, we're only talking about that, it's okay. Okay, great. All right, we, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session, and this is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the Dudley-Charlton Paraprofessional Association or litigation for MCAD. If any open, or MCAD, I'm not sure how you say it.
Yeah.
Okay. If any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, only to reconvene into regular session, to take votes if necessary and adjourn. I entertain a motion? So moved by Jamie DuVoy, second? Okay. Second by Nicole. This is a roll call, so Jamie? Nicole? Jean?
Yes.
Kathy, yes? Caitlin? And Kelly? Okay.